Good evening, everyone. I'd like to go ahead and call our Paramount City Council meeting to order of December 12th, 2023. Can we please have Madison Tay come up?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Madison Tay. May I please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And may I also have everyone please put their right hand over their heart and recite the pledge with me? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can everyone remain standing for the invocation?
Good evening. Let's go before the Lord in prayer tonight. Dear Heavenly Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, we come to you and thank you for the wonderful things that you have done for us in this city. We thank you for the community which we live and work and play and just commune with one another. We're thankful, Lord God, for the many wonderful things that have happened. Even the beautiful lights as we come down Paramount Boulevard and we see everything, the Christmas tree lighting the other day was just magnificent. Those are just tips of things that we can see and the many things that have been done go much, much deeper into touching the community and the residents that are here to better the lives of the people who live within this great city. We give you praise and thanks for that. We thank you for the City Council. We ask you to keep them strong and well. We ask you to help them to continue to move forward in the things that would excite this city and ignite this city for great things to come. We ask your blessing upon them physically and mentally and in every way possible. We ask you for their health, to give them strength each and every day. We thank you for our police departments and all of our first responders. Thank you for the hospital and thank you for all the individuals who work to better this community and we give you praise for that. Thank you for your love and your grace. Thank you for our school system and we ask, God, that you would just bless all of our students who attend and that you would strengthen them in their mind, in body, and spirit, that they may be great citizens to work for not only the city but later on for different things at which you would bring them to. We give you praise and thanks for all of these marvelous things in your precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. Heidi, may we please have roll call of council members, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Councilmember Olmos?
Here.
Councilmember Quera Stallings?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delgadoio? Mayor Agüayo?
Here. I need a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Delgadoio, please. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quera Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see so many of our friends and family and just members of our community. I think, you know, I can go ahead and speak for my councilor to say that we love seeing, you know, all of just our community come out for so many different things and, you know, we're here to celebrate you. Tonight, we are going to recognize some special members of our Paramount community. But before we do that, we're going to share a quick recap video of some of the spectacular holiday events we've celebrated over the past few weeks with all of you. And afterwards, my colleagues and I will go ahead and gather at the podium for our presentations. Let's go ahead and show that video. Now my colleagues will join me at the podium. All right. Would Madison Tay please come back up? Madison is a high school student and member of the Paramount Teen Leadership Alliance, also known as PTLA, run by the Community Services and Recreation Department. The PTLA is a new youth development and service club open to teens in Paramount. Tonight, we are recognizing their group along with several others for their amazing dedication as volunteers during our fall events. The PTLA added much-needed support during our Halloween festivities. We are so happy you could lead us in the pledge. We're going to kind of take a photo, okay? Now it is my pleasure to present the Mayor's Award of Excellence for December. Would Francisco Madrid please come join us? Founder and owner of Exclusive Wraps, Francisco is a Paramount business owner. He specializes in car wraps, large format printing, and quality paint protection services for vehicles. Francisco, like his father before him, opened his business in Paramount to provide automotive repair services to the community. He also provides auto collision resources to guide people through the stressful process of being involved in an automobile accident. Francisco is always happy to support and assist the Paramount community in different ways. As an active board member for the Paramount Youth Baseball Team, Francisco regularly sponsors equipment and banners for the team. Francisco also partners with local service organizations to support the well-being of our residents and fellow business members. Just last month, Francisco partnered with the city to provide 200 free turkeys to our residents through a drive-through distribution event. We are so thankful for this contribution, which helped feed many families during the holiday season. Thank you again for finding a way to support and uplift our Paramount community. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm sorry, I'm shy when it comes down to this. I just want to say thank you to City of Paramount. Thank you, Brenda, for helping me out. Thank you to Public Safety for helping us on a Sunday, coming out and guiding us and helping us with many, many cars that we wish we would have gave turkeys to as well. I just want to, I'm deeply honored to be here. This award is not only mine, it belongs to each and one of which contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood. It's a reflection of the power we hold when we unite and cause it greater than ourselves. As we celebrate today, let's not forget the challenges that we still lie ahead. Together, we continue to build bridges, foster understanding, and uplift those who need it most. Our community thrives when we extend our helping hand and I am grateful to be a part of the place that values companionship, generosity, and shared responsibility. Thank you, Paramount, for this honor. May it inspire all of us and keep working together to look for a better future for the City of Paramount. I'm really deeply honored. Thank you for everything you guys do and support me and let me be part of the community. Thank you.
Now would Danalee Leon, Executive Director of the Latinas Art Foundation and her Dia de los Muertos team, please come up? So we're going to go ahead. Founded in 2016, the Latinas Art Foundation encourages the study, appreciation, and recognition of Latino arts in Paramount. The foundation partners closely with the city to provide residents with dance classes, art workshops, and special events in Paramount. Every year, the foundation organizes Chantolo, Dia de los Muertos, at Progress Plaza on November 1st and 2nd. This beautiful and time-honored tradition truly comes together thanks to the collaborative efforts between city staff and the foundation's team of volunteers. From coordinating performances to decorating the plaza, this year's event was a masterpiece. Do we have the video? Let's go ahead and take a quick look at a video from the event. Now tonight, we would recognize and highlight seven foundation volunteers. If you are here, you can go ahead and come up. Veronica Martinez, Andrea Mercado, Ruby Torres, Carmen Pérez, Tomás Pérez, Lourdes Pérez, and Atilano Pérez. These volunteers went above and beyond putting together this year's event and we are so grateful for their immense hard work and dedication as volunteers. Their generosity has not only touched the lives of those we serve, but has also enriched the entire community. Let's go ahead and give them a hand if they're not here. So, as you can see, Paramount puts on numerous special events throughout the year for our residents. Dedicated staff members from various departments play such a pivotal role in their success. However, the true magic happens with the invaluable support of our outstanding volunteers. And tonight, we are celebrating those who worked our fall events. Before we begin with the formal presentations, we'd like to acknowledge all the Paramount High School clubs and teams that volunteered at our Halloween festival. These young volunteers worked the 40 candy game booths that are an essential part of our Halloween carnival. That was 40 booths. ASB, Cheer and Song, Interact, Avid, Course Sayers, Girls Wrestling, Leos, Kiwanis, CSF, Red Cross, and Link Crew. So now we're going to go ahead and move on to our formal presentations. Each group will receive a certificate of recognition. Starting with our Halloween festival, representing Paramount High School, we have invited members of Paramount Cheer and the Leos Club. Please join us. Come on, you guys. Now, the following groups also participated as volunteers to the Halloween festival. Please join us at the podium as I call your group's names. At the Jimenez Studios by Berta Jimenez. Chamber of Commerce ambassadors. Costco. Divine Beauty Supply and Salon by Blanca Fragoso. Kindred Hospital. LA Kings and Iceland. Mujeres Unidas Sirviendo Activamente, also known as Musa. The Paramount Historical Society. Paramount Teen Leadership Alliance. And World Energy. This is pretty amazing, isn't it? We're going to try.
Start over.
No, 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 no. Okay. Everybody else step in here and we'll start moving you around. Girls, you might end up doing that high school pose. I demonstrate, but I can't get back up. Okay. Girls, do that high school pose. Take a knee. You want to move something? Well, he's tall, too. Can the rest of you squeeze, but then Ronald's going to block somebody. Can you take a high school pose? Take a knee. You're a nice peek, dude. Does that work? We're going to take a photo before y'all leave the area here. I got to give you a certificate too, so. And you're going to tell me who's who. All right. Does that work?
Yeah, that's going to work. Okay, ready? One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. There you go. Thank you.
Oh, wait, cheer team members, this is for you guys. Your picture will be up on here for you guys to share.
Costco. Divine Beauty Supply. Kindred. LA Kings. Musa. And Paramount Historical Society, where'd you go? Thank you.
All right, let's continue. So I'm going to ask the cheer team to actually come back up. I couldn't stop you guys from leaving. Next was the Halloween Haunted House, where the Paramount High School Cheer and Song did an amazing job. Who went through it? Didn't you go through there, Councilmember Lemmons? And you were like, yes, so. So it did an amazing job. So we, did you take a picture with?
Yes, we're going to take a picture with them all by themselves and in the council. Here's another certificate.
Where would you like us?
Let's do it back here.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys just in that first row with no step. You don't have to heel this time.
Okay, ready? One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
I think they could stay up there, Dave. The council can stay up there.
Yeah. Okay. All right. The Cheer and Song team can stay up again because they also volunteered for the Halloween Hootenanny with the Leos Club. Both groups did an amazing job. So if any of the Leo members are here, please join us for a photo.
All right, ready? One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
The Leos Club has been busy as well. For the Day of the Dead event, we had the following groups volunteer. When I call you, go ahead and come up. The Leos Club, Girl Scout Troop 143, Girl Scout Troops 1614, Paramount High School Girls Wrestling, Musa, and the Paramount Teen Leadership Alliance. Come on up so we can take a photo. Come on up so we can take a photo.
Squeeze in tight. Okay, everybody who's in that row behind the Girl Scouts. So, go. This side can turn in. This side can turn in. Close them all tight. Can you see them? See them, right?
Yeah. Yes. All right. Okay, ready? One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Lastly, was the seniors Thanksgiving luncheon, where we had World Energy join us as volunteers. Representatives from World Energy, go ahead and come on up so we can take a picture. Have to take off the jacket. Okay. We thank you all so much for taking the time to make good things happen here in Paramount. You make Paramount stronger. Now, Juan Alessandra Soriano, Samara Watts, and Gerardo Silva, graduates of Odyssey STEM Academy, please join us at the podium. The Odyssey STEM Academy is a high school in Paramount Unified School District that focuses on science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as STEM. These graduates recently provided testimony to the Wildlife Conservation Board in Sacramento on behalf of Trout Unlimited. Behind me on the screen are photos from their visit. During the board hearing, the students advocated for Trout Unlimited's plan to revitalize and naturalize a portion of the L.A. River adjacent to Dills Park. If improvements to the river will strengthen flood protection and provide large, open space benefits for communities like Paramount. We are so excited to share that the Conservation Board approved 4.6 million in funding for the planning, design, education, and outreach for the L.A. River project. Thank you, graduates, for representing Paramount on such an important issue for our city and the surrounding areas. You did a fantastic job advocating for our community, offering authentic, local perspectives on naturalizing the L.A. River. Again, thank you so much. We are so proud. You've made us proud. Now, we also received a written comment from Robert Blankenship with Trout Unlimited, who was unable to be here this evening. Heidi, will you go ahead and read the comment, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's Robert Blankenship and Karen Barnett. We are so sorry we were unable to attend tonight's meeting, but wanted to offer our congratulations and many thanks to the Odyssey STEM Academy graduates who accompanied us to the Wildlife Conservation Board meeting in Sacramento, supporting restoration of the Lower Los Angeles River. Alessandra, Gerardo, and Samara were poised and professional in addressing the board and shared the local perspectives that are integral to moving a project like this forward. Our thanks also to the many residents and staff of Paramount who have shared their ideas and community passion. The funding we have received is dedicated to planning, design, and community-led engagement for restoration and access work adjacent to Dills Park over a three-year period, and we are excited to work with the City of Paramount. We plan to visit the City Council in the near future to present concepts on the project and continue to solicit feedback on the project as it develops. Congratulations.
Now, would any of you like to say a few words? Yes, go ahead, please.
First of all, I would like to thank the city, the mayor, the council, my councilmen for allowing us to be up here and recognizing us. I'd like to also thank the fellow Scott. This has just been a wonderful opportunity for us all, going to Sacramento and speaking on the board on behalf of our communities. I'm glad that finally we have one step forward into something that us or future generations can enjoy later on down the line. Again, it's been an honor and a pleasure, a pleasure.
These are our future leaders. So watch out for them because, you know, they're, they're gonna do great things. Let's go ahead and take a photo.
Yes, that works. Oh, Brenda's covered just a little bit. There we go. Okay, ready? One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Now, for our final presentation, I would like to invite William "Bill," our beloved city engineer, to the podium. Tonight, we express our gratitude and bid farewell to Bill, who will be retiring this month. For 41 years, Bill has played a crucial role in many infrastructure and park projects here in Paramount. As principal engineer for Willden and a contract city engineer, Bill has been a true partner in progress, collaborating seamlessly with city staff. Bill recalls many projects he enjoyed over the past years, but one that stands out is the Alondra Boulevard underpass. Prior to this being built, motorists on Alondra Boulevard would have to wait several minutes at times for crossing trains. Thank you for helping us improve traffic flows there. I know, I appreciate it. While we will miss your wealth of knowledge, we would like to congratulate you on your well-deserved retirement journey. Thank you for your dedicated service over the past 41 years to our city. May your retirement be as rewarding as the legacy you leave behind here in Paramount. Congratulations and best wishes for a joyful and fulfilling retirement. Got just a few words.
It's been a real pleasure. I know when I first came to Paramount, a lot of people from other, engineers from other cities said, why are you going to Paramount? It's the worst, one of the worst cities in the country. And it was an honor to turn that around and get Paramount its first All-American City Award. We did that with beautification. The other cities weren't doing it. And when we did it, they says, well, they could do it better, and they still haven't. So. So it's been an honor. There's been a lot of projects that we've done, park projects, street projects, safety improvement projects, speed humps. We started that. And, no, it's been a pleasure, and I appreciate that the city has had the confidence in Willden and for me to be your city engineer, deputy city engineer for the past forty-some years. So thank you very much.
Benefit of all female council.
Definitely leaves a legacy. And he's right, the other cities are still trying. This concludes our presentations for the evening. Thank you all for making Paramount great. We're gonna go ahead and take a five, 10-minute recess, and then we will go ahead and start our business portion of the meeting.
Can I have cheese? Jack is on.
Welcome back. We're going to go ahead and continue with the business portion of our council meeting. Is there any city council public comment update?
No, Madam Mayor, no updates.
Any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. A motion for the consent calendar, please.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stolling?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Moving on, we do have an item under Old Business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is just a motion and a roll call vote to take this item off calendar, and we hope to bring this back to you at the January meeting.
Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing for the ordinance 1177 and remove the item from the calendar.
I think I'll get some motion to take off calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stolling?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right, so item number 11 is an A and B. Both have a report, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Our first-
And they'll require a separate motion, correct?
That is correct, Madam-
Got it. All right, report, please.
All right, our first item involves awards of contracts for home improvements to two separate mobile home coaches at two separate mobile home parks, along with a volunteer cleanup day earlier this year at another mobile home park on Orange and others such as assistance like fair housing counseling. This shows that this city council's commitment to helping residents who live in mobile home parks. As you'll see, the proposed improvements will definitely make a positive impact to the look of these coaches and help spur further interest in our program, maybe by other residents. So with that, I'll turn it over to our planning director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the item. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and council members. This item is an award of contract for housing rehabilitation services through the Home Improvement Program. The program provides for repairs to owner-occupied, single-family homes and mobile homes on fixed foundations. The program began in 1982, and in 2022, the city council added mobile home improvements to the program. A household must qualify as low to moderate income, and the program is funded with federal home funds. The city contributes 80% or 90% of the cost, with the homeowner contributing 20% or 10%. The first project is located at 16601 Garfield Avenue, space number 406. Improvements will include the installation of a new water heater, a new roof, and new windows. The cost of this project is $26,150. The second project is located at 16707 Garfield Avenue, space 1908. Improvements here will include an ADA ramp at the main entry, a new roof, replacement and rehab of the skirting elements, and a new color coat to the exterior. The cost of improvements here is $26,730. And it's recommended that you award the contract for these two projects, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I'll move the item, Madam Mayor.
A second.
Okay, and this is for portion A. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stolling?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. Okay, and so for portion B, did we need a-
Yes, please.
Yes, please, we do. Oh, we don't need a report-
Just a motion?
Just the motion and vote.
So moved?
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stolling?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo.
Yes. All right, so moving on, next we have an award of contract for traffic safety improvements. This is city project number 9235. Can we please have the report?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. The next item is an award of contract for some traffic safety measures throughout the city, and as you'll see in a minute here, one location is at the intersection of Orange and Murr near Zamboni Middle School. Once this is done, the improvements here would really help promote pedestrian safety for school kids who are going back and forth to school. This has been on our list of improvements for several months now, and I also want to point out that this was brought up at a recent PTA meeting attended by the City Council and School Board Ad Hoc Committee. And additionally, as you'll hear during the presentation, Adriana will let you know about the extended timeframe for completing these improvements. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the city council. In 2022, the city was awarded $250,000 by the California Department of Transportation through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, state, local, or HSEP for sure, for traffic safety improvements at some crosswalk locations citywide. These improvements include the installation of new rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RRFBs, high-visibility signage, striping, and ADA-accessible curb ramps. Additionally, this project will include the installation of a hog pedestrian crossing signal on Orange Avenue at Murr near Zamboni School, as John indicated. The image on the left depicts a typical hog system used for heavy pedestrian use, and the image on the right is that of a rectangular rapid flashing beacon system, which we currently have at some intersections, such as the downtown area near Orcheteria, Rio Luna. On Thursday, November 16th, the city published the request for proposals in the Paramount Journal and on the city's website. Bits were open on November 28th with one bid received. The apparent low and responsive bid was submitted by Eleknor Belko Electric, Inc., in the amount of $518,888. The estimated project cost, including contingency, is at around $570,800. In terms of a timeline, as we've now seen, recent projects that include traffic signal hardware installation have had significant delays in receiving major components. Therefore, we anticipate the installation phase for this project could take anywhere from six to 12 months. Now, in terms of funding, the project was included in the fiscal year 24 CIP budget, utilizing Caltrans' HSEP grant funding and Measure M funds. The total project amount of $570,800 exceeds the already appropriated amount of $345,000. So the additional $225,800 needed for this project will be funded using available Measure M funds. So with that, it is recommended that the city council, one, appropriate an additional $225,800 from the city's Measure M allocation, and, two, award the contract for the traffic safety improvement project. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Adriana. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. So why is this type of signal being put in over a regular traffic signal? That's the question I was asked, and I didn't really know the answer.
That is a good question.
Because it looks like the cost is about the same.
It could be. It could be about the same. When the analysis was done for traffic highway safety in terms of pedestrian safety analysis, usually that's the one that they spec out for, you know, anywhere near schools. I don't know the specifics. I could ask that question. I wish Rafael was here, since he was, he's the one that worked on it, but I can get back to you as to why that wasn't the case.
Yeah, it's the only question I have, just because the cost is the same, and of course, a traffic signal has a lot more functionality than this type of signal does for controlling traffic. So I'm not opposed to this, but I would like to know if there's a good reason why we didn't do the other one before we move forward with it, so.
My only concern-
Go ahead, do you know?
No, you know, I was just wondering, on Orange and Murr, isn't there another street light that's very close to that, to this?
The closest one would be-
Closest would be Alondra. A laundra. It would be Alondra.
And Alondra.
Orange and Somerset.
Why not a regular traffic signal?
Somerset. Because of the traffic signal being-
Too, too close in proximity.
So what I would need to do, though, is we did submit this through the HSEP program, and the HSEP only funds certain things. In this particular case, that was specked out as what they call the hog system. It's this one, on the left.
Yeah.
If we were to change it, though, if we were even to consider changing it, we would have to go back to Caltrans to determine if the funding could be used for something different. That assumes that it meets all the warrants for a signal, and I'm looking at the engineers over here.
Yeah, and that could be another reason. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but by far. But it could very well be that it just didn't meet the traffic, the vehicular traffic warrants when they studied it. There's definitely the pedestrian, because Orange is not as busy as, say, a laundron passage where our latest one, Alondra's got heavy-duty traffic.
And it is a really busy intersection, you know, with the school and stuff.
At times it is. You're absolutely right, at times, especially during when school is getting in and out of session.
I just, you know, again, my only reservation is that I consider traffic signals a safer option than these that aren't, you know, it's kind of like an enhanced stop sign, in a way. And so because it's so expensive and close to the same price as a traffic light, if that is an option, I just would rather see that happen unless there's a good reason why it can't happen, because you're not going to go back and redo it with a regular traffic signal, spend another half million dollars, you know, so.
Right, right.
I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm just concerned, because they've been asking for it a long time, and are we doing the best that we can do, given the money and the circumstances, so.
Now, if I may, real quick, the project includes other intersections, other improvements, or other traffic, I'm sorry, other installation of the RRFB systems at other locations as well. And so the entire amount is not solely on the hog system. Obviously, it is expensive, but it's not the entire project. So it does include some additional striping and signage and, of course, the RRFB systems at three other intersections.
And that's fine, but again, then what is the dollar amount? Like, is that $50,000 of the project, or $150,000 of the project? I'm not, like I said, I have no objections to the improvement, I just want to make sure it's the best use of the money, so we don't have to double back, because it has been requested for so long.
Absolutely. Well, we are honored to have in the audience Mr. Casillas, where Rafael-
Someone can answer my question.
Casillas's boss is in the audience, Mr. Adell. He might be able to answer the question, being that he's an engineer from Willdan as well.
And what a pleasure, by the way. You guys have a great community here, a great audience and whatnot. Just to give you an idea of what's going on here, this is, this is not a traffic signal. A traffic signal is designed and installed to regulate traffic and pedestrian.
Right.
This particular signal here is just for pedestrian control only.
Right.
So it does not really have to do anything with the actual, as far as the traffic, you know, for the cars and vehicles. So this kind of a mid-block is different than being at an intersection. I believe that the traffic signal cost will be quite a bit higher than this particular hog signal, so there's quite a bit, probably, I'd say, 30, 40% higher. But I think the thing to keep in mind, that this grant, it's, the purpose of that is for public safety. So they deal with pedestrian, they don't really deal so much with cars and trucks and whatnot. So the purpose and the intention of this grant is to assist, you know, the public safety, and typically is close to schools or whatnot. And again, it's mainly to assist with the pedestrian movement and the vehicular movement, if that makes any sense.
Well, no, it doesn't really answer my question, because I hear what you're saying, but that's what I'm saying, it's an enhanced stop sign. I know that they're not as effective as a traffic light. I don't understand why it wouldn't be a traffic light. We have other traffic signals that are kind of mid-block instead of at major intersections. You could take Alondra as a manual light, for instance, you know, that's mid-block of Alondra. And the money, I'm not sure about, because this is like $500,000, and that's close to what we're paying for Stater Brothers, right?
No, the $500,000, the $500,000 includes the RRFB systems at other locations.
The one on the right of the slide.
The one on the right, and then also-
You can install those throughout town.
Some ADA curb ramps, some signage modification.
But again, is it broken down somewhere, like- Like, how many of them, and what is the cost of that? So what's the break, being of the project? And I apologize if it's there, I didn't see it.
It's not, and I think to pay, usually we get the study. There's always a copy of the study from them that we're able to review as well.
In this.
Well, see, if you tell me it doesn't meet the standards, and so that's one thing, but nobody's saying that. They're just saying, well, it controls pedestrians, not traffic. And I'm saying, well, if we have a chance to control traffic because of the issue that it's, that has been there, we should probably control traffic if it's that close to the same amount of money. That is my question. But I'm not hearing that it doesn't meet the standards. I'm just hearing that this will take care of pedestrians, but it doesn't take care of street traffic. I'm, you know, I've heard a lot of stuff, and in these types of discussions, when we've had them before, I've heard even the engineer report that when people have wanted crosswalks installed, that, well, you don't really want to put it there, because studies show that crosswalks actually create more danger than not having them, because people think that there's a crosswalk there, I can go at any time, I have the right of way. So they've used that argument not to install crosswalks. So here, you're talking on a major street near a school, and does, if there's not a reason why it can't be, and we're spending that much money, I just don't understand all of the ifs, ands, and buts about it.
If you'd like, we could postpone this to the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to know what kind of impact, and how quickly we can get that information back.
We can get it for the next meeting.
The next meeting would be January.
January.
But it would be the fourth Tuesday of January, since we don't have the first meeting in January.
The difference in price could be closer to $250,000 or so, I think.
Probably.
Based on, yeah.
I think the key thing to understand about this particular project is the kind of fund that we're using here.
Right.
Those funds are not, you know, out there to install a brand-new traffic signal. Those funds are particularly for this kind of improvements. So if we keep that in mind, I think we understand why we're doing this particular HAWK system versus installing a brand-new traffic signal.
And again, if you can tell me that without a doubt, if they go back and research it, that it couldn't be used for a traffic signal, it's for that, but if a traffic signal goes warranted, could it? Then, again, I still have that question. I think it's worth waiting one meeting for to have all the facts before we invest that much money in something that's been requested for a really long time, that we do it right the first time. That's just my opinion.
Okay, I'm looking at my colleagues. Any other questions, comments?
Questions?
Okay, so, let's go ahead, and.
We'll need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion, see if it gets a second, that it would be that we table, John?
Continue.
That we table this item to the January meeting with the request of all of the information that I brought up during my comments, so that we have a clear understanding of what we're about to invest in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. Thank you, okay. So item number 13 is another A and B item, and this one will also require separate motions. May we please have the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, now we're going to move over to technology. At the last city council meeting, we gave to you a preview of the newly proposed Website and Service Request app. We call this a smart city hall, or virtual city hall. Although not many cities have headed in this direction, some of them have, Paramount has always had a longtime commitment to exceptional customer service, and we feel it's just another way we can provide that level of service by using cutting-edge technology. So before you tonight, our agreements for your approval that will allow us to move forward with the purchase of this new and exciting website and service requests system. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Andrew Vialpando, who will walk you through the item. Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Yes, in the spirit of customer service, I bring before you a request for a couple of actions. This is an item that we brought to you less than a month ago, just kind of in a presentation or a report style, of the type of technology that's out there. At the time, we reported that we were completing our RFP process for a type of system that would be what we called a 311 virtual city hall, where I asked you to conceptualize and imagine an online forum for the city, where you can sign up for a salsa class, also get a business license for your business, track your service request for the street light that's out, and get a building permit, all in one transaction. That's where we aim to go in the next two, five, 10 years, and we see building on that, scaling that type of customer service for not only our residents, but staff as well. So as I mentioned, what we're referring this as is a smart or a virtual city hall. It's known as a solution as a service, that one-stop digital shop for all city services. The catalyst behind this is the simple fact that the city receives thousands of different requests by call, email, and messages every month for a variety of our municipal services. We process these, for the most part, manually. There are some automated things, but we envision going fully automated, so that we build workflow systems behind this type of system to make it more efficient, not only for staff, but residents as well. Our current systems, such as our current city website, although we recently updated it, which just means updating content, and we can do that from time to time, it doesn't have the robust capabilities to get it to the demand that we want, and what the city council has expressed over and over again on how we present our information to our public. In addition, we also use a CRM system, known as, it's provided by GoGov, it's what we've coined Paramount Works. That's where residents can go on and make service requests, where staff respond to them. None of those systems are integrated, they don't talk to each other, and residents can't see live what is going on and how their services, their request is being handled. So we envision a system where all of those things are integrated together. So I went over the request for proposals process at the last meeting. This is just a slide that speaks a little bit further about it. We narrowed it down to two providers. I didn't disclose who the, who we felt was the best provider. We wanted to present to you the technology at the time, and then select a provider based on that feedback that we received. So using that information, we selected 3DI as the most qualified firm. 3DI is relatively new to this game, however, they have a lot of experience in the LA region. They've built out the LA, they've built out several divisions of LA County's websites. In fact, the owner-president is, this is proprietary system that he created, they currently service the city of Pico Rivera, as well as others. None of it is template, none of it is boilerplate, none of it is off-the-shelf. All of it is completely customizable, the way, so that it reflects exactly how the city of Paramount should look, not just online, but how we, how we move forward with our customer service. When we talk about modules and the different modules it contains, or they can build for us, this is just a snapshot, an example of different ones they can provide for us. They can build an entire module that does all of our licensing, permitting, appointment schedules, and calendars. Picture a one-stop where you can see all the city events on one calendar, that's automatically updated as staff on the backend updates them, and not have to push out updates through our website. A robust code enforcement service system, I mentioned, request for services, bill payments, data analysis, claims and risk management, and much more. If we move forward with the action this evening, the next couple of months will involve building the first modules, which will include a new mobile website and service request application. This is a state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art service that will replace the city's GoGov, Paramount Works app, and the city's website. A robust bill pay and payment management system that consolidates all of the different sorts of, well, we'll start small at first, but eventually we'll consolidate all of our different bill payment and point-of-sale customer service programs. Then I mentioned a robust code enforcement module. There's a multitude of future capabilities, these are just three, I could probably name them off another dozen, but we also envision a site where we can have business licenses also incorporated in a one-stop shop. Parks and Recreation will tell you that there's a monopoly on the registration system for how recreation works, so if you want to rent a facility and also sign up for a class, there's basically one, maybe two companies out there that gives you a standard, a module. We would create one and develop it that's customized, not only to benefit our staff, but the residents as well. And a variety of different municipal permits that this company would help us develop. I'll tighten the nexus, not just the fiscal impact, but this will also help explain the timeline. As you can imagine, this is a very comprehensive upgrade to our digital systems. If we were to do it in-house, using our small resources, it could probably take two, maybe three years. So what I would propose, what we're proposing is adding an additional $100,000 dedicated just for a project manager for this. It wouldn't be a city staff, it would be an addition to our current IT contract, to have somebody dedicated onsite 20 to 30 hours a week to get this project implemented by, we're hoping to have a first draft by the summer, and then go live in the fall. So that's that middle portion here on this slide. Top portion is the cost of the actual system, it's $138,000 in its first year, which includes implementation costs. Subsequent years will have a payment schedule, as identified in years two, three, four, and five. So the total cost with the proposed project management services for the first year, including a 10% contingency for unexpected costs, would be $261,800. We currently have funding of $70,000 appropriated in our capital improvements projects budget, so this action, if approved, will require that we appropriate an additional $191,800 in this year's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Both of these items are before you for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
One question, Madam Mayor. So I see the implementation and go-live for staff. Sorry, I can't see.
Yeah, it's okay.
This is exciting, but how would the residents be trained? Is that something like the staff would do, or we would hire somebody to, like a rollout plan, a marketing plan, or?
That's a great question. I think once we get to that point, we'll probably have quite a bit of options of how to do something. What I envision, just based on that, I hadn't thought of that, to be quite honest with you, but I think what would be pretty neat is for our social media team to create like a video go-to.
Go-to?
Yeah, go-to of how to, you know, you're going to have the option. We've heard you, and we hear what the city council desires, we want residents the option to sign up or not sign up, to have a login or not have a login, to put a service request in completely anonymously, with or without an email. So those are the types of things we want to be able to show the residents, that this is what the system is capable of doing.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead, I got excited.
No, 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 that's fantastic.
It's good stuff.
Did you ask about the notification system? Is that what you asked?
How like the, so I said, what happens, like, the implementation is already set for the staff, but how do we roll it out to the communities? Are there going to be like some type of education process, or? So he's like, yeah, there has to be something put in place for that.
Question? No comment?
I have a.
Okay.
I'm sorry if I missed it, I have to admit that for a minute there, I went brain-dead. The subscriptions for the subsequent years, did you explain what those were? Did I miss that? I saw the dollar amounts, but I.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward. I'll use our current website provider as an example. We have a company called Granicus, that it basically manages and maintains our current city website. You got to pay a company to host our website. Each year, those companies require a subscription fee. Same thing with this one. So the first year cost, $138,000 here, is for both implementation, building the modules, getting the actual legwork to launch the website and service request system. For subsequent years, this is just the subscription cost, just to maintain the website and service request, and build the additional modules.
Okay, yeah, the part that threw me was to integrate other modules, so I thought year two, you were going to add a module of some kind, year three, and that's what I was saying, was there a plan for what those were?
Great point, yeah. So the additional modules are built into these costs, so there won't be add-on costs beyond this. We are, we've asked the firm, we asked all the firms to provide a proposal that would say, that would reflect, say, three or four modules per year on addition. And the reason why we did that is, there are current services that we provide, business license is a great example, we use HDL, we just converted to HDL, we signed that contract not more than a year ago. So we don't see replacing that entire, that entire service maybe until year three. Or there might be some systems that we don't want to develop, we don't want to recreate or reinvent the wheel, we'll be able to incorporate them as, looking as though it's our main website, but it just takes you at a third party. So those are different options that we've scaled in years two, and three, and four, and five, planning ahead, that we want the firm to be able to scale with us, up or down.
So then, what this is saying is, this is a subscription fee, and the integration of a module, but right now, you don't have a plan for years two through five, what those modules will be. You're just saying, if something comes along that we want to add, it's built in with this fee?
Yes, yes and some no, in that we don't have a, we have a general idea of some of the modules we want to bring in in year two and year three. This also gives us the options for something that we don't see right now, that in year two or three.
Futuristic type options. And what we're doing initially, are you comfortable that all of the things that we're currently doing, plus that little bit that we know that we can't do right now, is going to happen in the initial takeoff of the site? That's not a two, three, four, five-year project?
Yes, I am confident with that, and I say that, I wouldn't say that if we weren't recommending an additional project manager to help lead this project.
But I just wanted to know, like, what I'm expecting to see, I'm not going to have to wait two, three, four, five. You're saying, no, all that initial stuff's going to be there, this is planning for the future additions, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so for portion A.
Uh, move approval.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. All right, now we have portion B.
So move.
I think that was a first and a second in there, I think it was Olmos and Quara Stallings. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. All right, so now we have professional services agreement with Gruen Associates to prepare commercial design guidelines. May we please have the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, our Planning Director, Mr. John Carver, will handle this item. John?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Okay, this item is a request to approve a professional services agreement with Gruen Associates to prepare commercial design guidelines. The last time our design guidelines were updated was in 1984. The updated guidelines will include landscaping, building materials, and signs. Updated commercial design guidelines will continue to modernize the central business district and our two commercial zones. The new guidelines will help to implement contemporary design features to maintain a vibrant and attractive pedestrian environment. The consultant, along with staff, will begin with targeted discussions with the community. Outcomes, goals, and expectations will be identified. Gruen Associates is a multiple disciplinary firm that prepared the recently adopted North Paramount-specific plan. If approved by the council, Gruen will begin the development of the design guidelines within five months. We will bring you an update on the direction of those guidelines in the spring, just to make sure we're on the right track. The cost to prepare the design guidelines will not exceed $80,000, and this amount is included in the FY 2324 budget. And it's recommended that you approve the agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Move approval.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. All right, moving on, we have an award of contract demolition services at 16305 Hunt Acre Avenue. May we please have the report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as you know, the city has owned a home on Hunt Acre Avenue since 2019. The intent was, and still is, to demolish the structures that are on the property, which are now vacant, and work with a local nonprofit to build affordable housing at this property. Our progress was slowed a bit by the pandemic, and as well as with the relocation of the existing tenants, but as I mentioned, that is now behind us. We can move forward with a significant step, which is the demolition of the structures. So with us tonight to tell you more about this is our Management Analyst in the Planning Department, Ms. Sol Beharano, who will handle the item. Sol?
Thank you, John. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an award of contract for demolition services at 16305 Hunt Acre Avenue. In 2019, City Council authorized the purchase of 16305 Hunt Acre Avenue, utilizing our low to moderate income housing fund. The property itself has been in an extremely dilapidated condition for years, and acquiring the property was the first step towards the. towards redeveloping the property with low-density affordable housing units. City council may recall that just last month, ordinance number 1176 and zone change number 246, a request to change the official zoning map from a R2 medium-density residential to PDPS planned development with performance standards, single-family residential, was adopted. This was the second step in the process. As John mentioned, the property is currently vacant. However, the city deems it necessary to preserve the immediate safety and quality of life of the surrounding neighborhood. Subsequently, a notice, city published a notice of sealed inviting bids for demolition services on November 2nd. And our bids were opened on November 14th. The city received a total of three bids, of which one was not, didn't meet the criteria, so they were deemed incomplete. Of the two remaining bids, the lowest apparent bid was submitted by Resource Environmental, Inc., in the amount of $79,700. It's important to note that there will be no additional fiscal impact as the funding for this project was budgeted and approved just last month at November 2nd adjourned meeting. And with that, it is recommended that city council award the contract for demolition services at 16305 Huntacre Avenue. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Marigualio?
Yes.
All right, next we have an agreement with Flock Group, Inc. for Flock Safety License Plate Recognition System. May we please have the report?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Moving back over to technology. We currently have a good number of cameras at intersections throughout town that read license plates for law enforcement purposes. We'd like to expand our deployment of these cameras. And as you may recall, at the November 2nd special meeting of the council, the city council authorized funding for this purpose. So with that, I'll turn it over to our management analyst in public safety, Mr. Danny Alizarias. Danny?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. I will be presenting for the agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for the license plate recognition system. Can you assist me with the lights, please? Thank you, Sol. For a little background, license plate recognition technology, also known as LPR, is sophisticated technology that uses cameras to scan license plate numbers. The scanned license plates are then compared to license plate numbers of stolen vehicles and vehicles associated with the crime. What is unique about the Flock cameras the city utilizes is that a real-time alert is generated and law enforcement is notified when a stolen or wanted vehicle, or wanted vehicles are detected. In 2001, 2020, when I apologize, the city entered into an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated to install 10 fixed LPR cameras. This provided, this proved to be very effective. So in 2022, the city added four additional cameras. In a special meeting on November 2nd, the city council expressed interest in expanding the LPR camera program within the city so that we could provide even more coverage. With the current agreement expiring December 31st, 2023, staff is proposing to meet this city council directive by adding an additional six cameras and entering into a new five-year agreement with Flock Group Incorporated that incorporates with the existing 14 with a new total of 20 LPR cameras. The current budget for maintenance of the 14 existing cameras is $38,500. The installation of the six new cameras will cost an additional $15,400 for the remainder of this fiscal year. As proposed in the November 2nd special meeting, the funding for the six additional cameras will be provided through the ARPA money that is reserved in the general fund for community projects. For the remainder of the agreement, general fund will cover the cost, which is projected to be $52,500 annually. So with that, it is recommended that we amend the current appropriation for the Flock cameras to include the additional six cameras for $15,400 and to approve the agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for a five-year term in a total amount not to exceed $266,400. This concludes my presentations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have one just comment, John. And I'm going to probably direct this to you. I don't know who talks to the company Flock. Is that...
That would be Maggie.
Maggie. I'm not sure if you ever had conversations about them and their expanding their technology to read license plates. This is something, I mean, I don't know if they've ever thought about that. I mean, because right now, it's reading license plates for stolen vehicles, correct? But maybe to help us with street takeovers. I'm just saying, as a comment, not a question.
Definitely, that has been something that we've communicated with Flock Group in the past. They're actually initiating more of a surveillance, but that technology has not yet been introduced to municipalities. But we have been in contact with them. Anything that we can do, again, to serve as a deterrent is something that will always be on our list as a priority. And that's a great suggestion.
I mean, right, if they're reading license plates for that.
Yeah, because that'd be a great tool.
Absolutely.
Maybe you guys can invent it, and then we'll just be popular.
Is there any other questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I did just want to comment that I think it was about two years ago that I'm so terrible at names, but the gentleman who was doing our cocoa with the deputies when he played Santa at the station.
Oh, yes, retired detective Dave Baton.
Yeah, because he's retired, you know. But he had, I remember caught Councilmember Olmos and I in the parking lot and said, you know, if there's anything that, you know, you could do for us, we really would like some more of these LPRs. Is that what they're called? He says, they've just made such a tremendous difference for us in being able, you know, to catch criminals. They've been so effective. And he even asked if we go lobby the other cities surrounding us and try to get them to do the same so that they could follow from one city to another. So I'm really glad that this funding's come through and that that's where we're putting the dollars.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that feedback. And I'm sure law enforcement agrees as well. And the good news is that neighboring cities have actually acquired the same license plate readers. So from my understanding, cities like Hawaiian Gardens, Pico Rivera, have done the same because they have truly been effective and law enforcement truly supports this technology. So thank you.
You know, if it's happened in our, like, border cities, like, you know, Compton, Long Beach, Bellflower, Downey?
Let me inquire with our service area lieutenant to see if neighboring cities have something similar to this.
Lieutenant Morales, are you aware if Bellflower has them, or Downey, or Long Beach? Bellflower. And Compton?
So if you don't, other cities, you're on notice. The deputies would really like to see you put those in your community so that as they leave Paramount, they can track them on into your city and we can put it into whatever criminal activity they're about.
We're going to go advocate.
Yes. That was it, right there. That was my advocate.
All right. Thank you for that. So we do need a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So move.
Second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quara Stallings?
Yes.
Marigualio?
Yes. All right, so we do have under old business for our environmental sustainability portion. And this is a public hearing with both, and again, an A and B portion. So we're going to hear the staff report. We're going to open the hearing. We're going to do the testimony, and we'll close the motion. And then we'll do questions and comments.
Awesome, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for introducing the item. This last item is all the approvals that will allow us to start the energy efficiency and infrastructure project. It's an ambitious project, but as you've heard three other times that the city council has heard about this project, it's definitely going to be well worth it. The presentation before you tonight will focus on the funding model that we will use to implement this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Ms. Kim Sau, who will walk you through the item. Kim?
Thank you, John, for the introduction. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. In March of 2023, the city enlisted the services of Willdan Energy Solutions to prepare a comprehensive analysis for potential energy savings projects citywide. In early November, the city council received a report on the outcome of this analysis and the recommendations for projects moving forward. The projects presented included the citywide installation of advanced meter infrastructure, or AMI, water meters, solar panels for both the gym and the public works yard, and the installation of a level-three quick charger to meet the future needs of the city's electric fleet. At the November 28th meeting, Willdan Energy presented a follow-up to the earlier November meeting with regards to some billing questions. That brings us to tonight, which is a public hearing on both the financing for the project and the contract approval with Willdan Energy Solutions to construct these projects. If approved tonight, we anticipate these projects to begin in late spring of 2024. The project will consist of three components: the advanced water meter project, the solar project, and the car charging stations. The project will have a total cost of approximately $12.7 million. Of this total, the advanced meter component, water meter component, has a total cost of $11,236,354, which includes the fees and expenses of the city's municipal advisor and special counsel, legal counsel. The water meter component will be financed as a lease purchase agreement with Bank of America. The solar and electric vehicle charger components will have a combined total of $1484,418, which will be paid for by the general fund CIP reserve. The project comes with guaranteed savings for the solar and water meter projects. In the blue section of this table, the water meter project with a cost of $11.2 million is expected to recover revenue loss in the amount of $791,000 per year. Plus, the new advanced water meters are projected to save the city approximately $230,000 per year in maintenance costs. This total annual saving of $1.1 million is expected to exceed the annual lease payments of approximately $897,000 per year. The solar panel projects will also save on electricity by lowering the city's Edison bill by approximately $28,000 for the Paramount Park solar panels and $44,000 for the Public Works solar panels. There is a minor cost of a few thousand dollars to maintain the solar panels as well. In addition, the city will take advantage of a $5 million smart water grant available for water conservation that, if received, will be used to prepay the lease financing. I will cover this grant in more detail in the next slide. The federal government also provides incentives for installation of solar panels. The city will receive approximately $140,000 and $283,000 in federal incentives for the Paramount Park and the Public Works carport solar installation, respectively. Again, it is important to note that the annual savings generated by the AMI meters are anticipated to exceed the annual lease payments in each year. In the event that the annual savings are not sufficient to cover the annual lease payments, the city's agreement with Willdan Energy requires Willdan to pay the difference. Recently, in November of 2023, the Federal Bureau of Reclamation officially posted the Water Smart financial assistance available for water sustainability projects. The Water Smart project focuses on projects that result in quantifiable and sustained water savings, including canal lining and piping projects, municipal metering projects, and supervisory control and data acquisition, known as GATA, and automation projects. The city water meter project fits the grant's focus on water conservation and other benefits that contribute to sustainability. It provides a maximum assistance of $5 million and requires a 50% match using non-federal money. So our total project cost of approximately $11 million using the water fund revenue will satisfy this matching requirement. And in addition, the project must be completed within three years. As soon as this project kicks off, we expect that the installation of the water meters will be completed within six to nine months. So therefore, the city expects to meet this three-year requirement as well. Willdan will assist the city in the request for this federal funding and will submit the grant application by the due date of February 22nd of 2024. So we expect to receive the award determination by December 31st of 2024. This table shows the financing terms with Bank of America Public Finance Corp. With the scenario that we will finance the water meter in the amount of $11,236,354. This amount includes the cost of issuance in the revised and lower amount of $62,000. We have locked in the interest rate of 4.859%, and the bank will honor this rate lock through the end of this month, December 31st. If the council approves this item tonight, we plan to close on the lease financing with the Bank of America on December 19th next week, prior to the expiration of the rate lock on December 31st. The stated term of the lease financing is 20 years with equal payments of $897,304 per fiscal year. The first payment is due a year from now, on December 1st, 2024, and the last payment due 20 years from now, in December of 2043. At the end of this 20-year term, the total interest payment on this lease will total $6,705,723. So as you can see, it will cost us approximately $6.7 million to borrow $11.2 million for a total payment of $17.9 in principal and interest expenses. So looking over to the green column on the right side, we have negotiated with Bank of America the option to pay down the lease if we receive the $5 million Water Smart grant. The bank agreed and gave us three years from now, until December 2027, to exercise this prepayment option. If we do exercise the prepayment option, the principal will be reduced to $6.3 million, inclusive of the 1% prepayment penalty. One option we have considered is to backload this prepayment, thereby reducing the annual payment to approximately $656,000 per year, resulting in the last payment to be due on December 1st of 2037, which will basically shorten the repayment term to 14 years. This will ultimately save the city $3.4 million in interest expenses. Also, even though if... Also, even though if, even if the city does not, is not awarded the $5 million grant, Willdan has projected that the annual revenue recovery and cost savings from the AMI project will exceed the scheduled annual lease payments, making this portion of the project cost-neutral. The $5 million grant, if awarded, will be a bonus to the city. Lastly, the equipment lease purchase agreement comes with some conditions that should be highlighted. This agreement is to finance the advanced water meter project only. The annual lease payments will be payable by the city from any legally available funds of the city, such as the general fund and the Water Fund. The lease is secured by a security interest in the leased equipment. This means that in the, in the event of a loan default, the bank may repossess the water meters and not the water revenues. The city budget must also appropriate funds for lease payments annually by June of each fiscal year. This means that failure to budget and appropriate will be considered a default. At the closing of this escrow next week, the project funds must be deposited in escrow with Wilmington Trust. The city will then requisition funds to pay for the AMI project costs as needed. As mentioned earlier, under the lease agreement with Bank of America, annual lease payments will be payable from any legally available funds. Because the AMI meters represent a project of the Water Enterprise, Resolution Number 23038 directs at the Finance Director to prepare a budget each fiscal year for approval by the city council that includes amounts for either direct payments or reimbursements from the Water Enterprise Fund for rental payments of these AMI meters. Currently, the Water Fund is not able to make the annual lease payment because the operating expense currently exceeds the incoming revenues due to the high cost of purchasing the drinking water. Therefore, the city currently anticipates that the General Fund will make the lease payments and therefore recognize an interfund loan from the General Fund to the Water Fund. And under the Water Fund, it should be noted that there are currently two outstanding installment sales agreement, or loans, with I Bank. Under these agreements, annual installment payments and operating expenses must be paid before water revenues may be used to pay the interfund loans. Each fiscal year, the annual Water Fund budget must also include amounts necessary to make lease, lease payments or repay the General Fund. If the water revenues are insufficient or the city is in default under the I Bank installment sales agreements, the interfund loan repayments will be deferred to the following year, and the lease payments of the water meters will need to be paid from the General Fund. And looking over to the General Fund, like the Water Fund, the city will also be obligated to budget and appropriate lease payments annually. The interfund loan to the Water Fund will be subordinate to existing Water Fund obligations. Again, this means that the Water Fund must meet its annual payment obligations to I Bank and pay all operating and maintenance expense of the Water Enterprise Funds first. Then the General Fund will have the right to be paid next. The city will be obligated to make lease payments to Bank of America even if water revenues are insufficient. And finally, the city council's approval of Resolution 23038 will not only authorizes the lease agreement to acquire the water meters, but it also memorializes the Water Fund's obligation to pay and reimburse the city's General Fund for all costs that will be advanced by the General Fund. And this concludes my presentation. It is recommended that the city council read by title only and adopt Resolutions 23037, Approving the Energy Service Contract, and also appropriate $1,482,850 from the General Fund CIP Reserve to pay for the solar panels and EV charger project, and Resolution 23038, Authorizing an Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement, and Memorializing the Obligation of the Water Enterprise Fund to Pay or Reimburse the General Fund for the Cost of the Water Meter Project. And this concludes my presentation. We have representatives from Willdan Energy and staff, and also our legal counsel and our municipal advisor who are waiting online to answer any questions that you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there any testimony in favor?
There's been no testimony submitted in favor of either of the two noticed public hearings.
Any opposed?
And none opposed either.
Okay, so I will need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings? Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. Okay, is there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor, I just have one. So it says the city anticipates receiving the $5 million in funds. Do we have an option B in case that doesn't happen?
If it doesn't happen, as we stated earlier, this is a cost-neutral project because we anticipate savings from this project that will basically cover the cost of the financing.
Okay, so this is just an extra, what I heard you say, that it'd become back to the city?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so we're gonna go ahead and we will do portion A first. I'm gonna go ahead and I need a motion.
Move Resolution Number 23037.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes.
Move Resolution 23038.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayle Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Aguiayo?
Yes. All right, so we're actually gonna go ahead and move on to comments and committee reports. We will start with Councilmember Lemmons.
First, I want to say, I was talking to Andreas tonight, and he told me he got a promotion and he's gonna be at City Hall, so I wanted to congratulate him. And to also say, when Danny came up and gave his report, I can remember back in the day, you driving me to my sanitation meetings and you were in college and just starting with the city. And I was thinking the same about Sarah, sitting there in the front row and coming up. So it, it really just struck a chord with me, how you guys came here as just young kids in college and stayed with us. And I hope you're really proud of all of your accomplishments. And we're so pleased that you loved us enough to stay and that you've been so dedicated to helping us make Paramount a better place to live. So congratulations to all of you.
I second that motion.
Also, I wanted to recognize and give a thank you. In our audience tonight is former school board president Vivian Hansen. And Vivian was kind enough to do us a favor tonight because we had an awards meeting tonight. The school district also had their reception for their outgoing and incoming president. So Diane Martinez was outgoing as president. And Vivian, who is, to my knowledge, the longest-serving board member there was 30 years or more, went and made that presentation for us to Diane tonight. So thank you. Oh, thank you so much.
Okay.
Um, let's see. So we kicked things off, as everybody knows, with the tree lighting. It was amazing, beautiful, exciting. The crowds went so far down the street, I couldn't see the end of them. It was my grandson Jacob's first tree lighting, and I brought him up on stage with me. And as much as I love him, boy, was that a mistake. Great job, everybody, though, on all the hard work for the tree lighting. I loved the addition of the carolers. And I, I liked all the Christmas music that went with all the performances. It was really festive. It was really beautiful. And then, of course, we had our trek on the train throughout the city. And we had the addition of the Elf on the Shelf and Frosty. And I, you know, got the sense that the crowds really enjoyed them because I heard Mrs. Claus complaining that she wasn't getting her normal amount of attention. And so I'm glad that they were, they were a help. Even Santa complained. And so we love bringing that to the community. I know there were some comments that some people didn't get to see the characters. If they're brought back another year, we will be working to expand them to longer hours, if possible. Then I went to the, the Snow Fest. And amazing how much that has grown. I mean, it literally took up the entire park with all of the activities that were going on. I mean selfies with Santa, a bounce house, and food of all different kinds. I spent so much money in that food court, I'm ashamed of myself. And crafts going on. I saw Isabel's daughter there, and she was doing animal drawings and amazing artist that she is. So just face painting, of course, going on with Bertha, so just an incredible amount. My children really pushed me to get up on the bobsleds with my grandson. And I can say it was a blast coming down, but boy, that's a rough stop. Again, said, hey, let me tell you. So that was a lot of fun, incredible job that you guys did for that. And I did want to point out that at the Snow Fest, too, I took my grandson into the bouncy house section. Now, mind you, he's only two years old. So, you know, two-year-olds are a little afraid of everything that's going on. And, and they didn't allow the adults to go back there, so you kind of turned him over to this group. Well, this group happened to be, as far as I knew, from their uniforms, all the cheerleaders and high school students. What an amazing group of young people. You could tell these kids are great babysitters, you know, because they just took him in there and he warmed right up to them. And they were so cordial and so polite to all the parents who were having to turn their children over, and so helpful getting them up into these little bounce houses. And I can just say, I was just so pride, proudful, so prideful of their attire, their demeanor, their professionalism. So fantastic job you guys did. And holidays are coming up. Merry Christmas to the community, to our staff, if we don't get a chance to see each other again. And thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the incredible hard work that you've done this year to help Paramount celebrate Christmas.
All right, Councilmember Quayle Stallings.
Well, I did the same things as Councilmember Lemmons. So yes, we did, we had the beautiful Christmas tree lighting of our 25th anniversary, and I was on the Santa train. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to be Miss Santa Claus for two, two nights. It was a great, great two nights, until Mr. Santa Claus came and protested to our city manager, you know, why was Frosty the Snowman invading our customers? So, but anyway, I took it very, I took it to the heart. So I went around the back of the train. And whoever came to me, I was available if you needed to come and take your pictures with Miss Santa Claus. So Councilmember Olmos asked me, what are you doing back here? And I said, well, Mr. Frosty the Snowman is here and very popular. But that's okay. Next year, I, I have a different plan for him. I'll stand right in front of him. So anyway, no, 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 seriously, I'll stand to the side of him. And then they can go to him and then come to me. So anyway, but it was a fabulous four nights. On, I, on the fifth Friday, I realized I was starting to get a little hoarse, and I was getting a little sore throat. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it for anything. I enjoy those sparkling faces as soon as they see Santa Claus and as soon as they see Frosty the Snowman. And when they see me, they smile too. But it was a lot of fun.
Oh, they loved Mrs. Claus.
Thank you. And then I also attended with our mayor the Musa Appreciation Breakfast. Thank you, Musa Moms, for all you do for our community. And let me see, I always was also able to get off the train and go home and get dressed and go attend my meeting at the Cities of Government on Wednesday night, and then come back and get back on the Santa train. So anyway, I just want to thank everyone, everyone, all our staff that was involved in any way. Parks and Recreation, you know, all our employees. And, you know, even the, the young man that drives that train. Oh my goodness, he can turn those curves and go, and then we go down.
It was fun.
It was fun, especially when we were heading, I'm gonna say maybe east on the Laundra Boulevard and we're making a ride on Garfield. And boy, go under that, under path, oof! That was a lot of fun. But anyway, and then, you know, my colleagues and all of us are going, whee! But anyway, just like a bunch of little kids. But we had a blast. And also, Adriana, I want to thank your staff, too. I mean, you know, they do such a great job and they love it. And our, our deputies, oh my goodness, even our lieutenant was out there. I mean, it was fantastic to see all these deputies and our lieutenant out there, you know, engaging with our community. It was, I just had a blast, and I had a blast for everyone. And last, John, I want to thank everyone who put that traffic light at Stater Brothers. What, all the comments that I have received from the, the residents that live on Passage and Perilla? Oh, sir, they love that light.
Awesome.
They, you know, and thank you. Thank you in behalf of our budget and everything, getting that traffic light out. And one last thing, John, is I'm still receiving some phone calls regarding the street minibikes. They're very concerning to them. I was wondering if you could bring back a little report regarding, you know, what are the, you know, do we have a resolution not allowing them? Are they allowed to be on the street? You have a, a police officer from LAPD that lives in our city, and it's very concerning to him because he said he was, this is the second time he was driving down Laundra Boulevard, and he had several minibike, young men surround his vehicle. And as he was trying to turn into his residential street, he was unable. And it was very concerning to him. So this is the second time he's brought it to my attention, sir. So I was wondering if you could bring back a report regarding it.
Certainly, Councilmember. There's consensus from the rest of the council. We'd be happy to, we'd be happy to do some analysis on that and bring it back at a future council meeting.
Yes, there's consensus. Happening more often on streets.
No problem at all. We will do that.
And last, everyone, and Andreas and all of you who have worked your way up for the city, congratulations and thank you for everything you do for our residents. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Feliz Navidad y Proximo Ano Nuevo. For my family to your family. Good night, everyone.
All right, Councilmember Olmos.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna make this kind of quick. I want to talk about that street light over on Stater Brothers. And I have to tell you, to me, that reminds me of Tom Hanson. I remember being up on, I think it was in 2019, and I sat in that corner, and we were having discussion about that street light. And Tom said, I don't feel safe coming, coming at a Stater Brothers. What are we gonna do about that? So I tell everybody, Tom Hanson was a big advocate for that light. So just happened that you be here tonight that we're talking about it. So he's in my heart forever for that. So good, Tom. Good job. You know, I will just kudos again to the, the team for everybody. You guys made our Christmas holiday this year. I think it was one of the best years ever that I remember, um, everything combined. I think we had so many people from other cities that were in our apple lines that, because I was just asking, oh, like, where are you from? Because there's a lot of people we didn't recognize. I mean, we're a small community. We know a lot of people. And I was like, oh, where are you from? Oh, we're from Lynwood. You know, I'm from Compton, I'm from Downey. And I was like, oh. So they were coming to check out what we do here, what I thought was kind of exciting. And I think that's, our lines were extra long this year. Um, we gave out more apples, I think, this year too. We were in a little bit more later than usual. But again, the other cities were able to appreciate what we do here in Paramount. So I've been seeing a lot of slays in other cities that are happening now as well. So.
I think those outsiders wanted the little apples. They thought they were gonna get those little apples.
So again, Paramount is on the, um, has been on the map. We keep doing that. Um, um, you guys already talked about Christmas. I just want to talk about, I actually attended my, um, LA County Division Strategic Priorities meeting on Saturday morning, early in downtown LA at 8:00 in the morning. And we talked about priorities of what we want to kind of do this year in league and how we want to ensure that we're advocating for our cities. So of course, public safety was number one. I think that's something that everyone continues to talk about. Um, looking at policies for public safety, affordable housing and homelessness were kind of like the top issues. But I think, again, we stood out because, uh, city council members that are from like Arcadia and, and, um, Santa Monica, and they were talking about ways that how they can educate their residents on advocacy, on legislative advocacy, like what, how do we get it out there, what we're doing? And I was like, well, don't you guys put it on your website? And they're like, no, we don't. So I sent that to everybody. Again, they're like, oh, this is like a great idea that you guys do this. So again, they're like, wow, Paramount, you guys are, it just made me feel really proud of the city that we are. So I'm sure you may be getting calls of how you guys put that together. So. Um, that's all I have. Again, I just want to say happy holidays on behalf of my family, council colleagues, staff. Um, I just wish you guys Happy New Year, a Merry Christmas, and then a Happy New Year. And I can't wait for 2024 for us to continue all that we do in the city for our residents.
All right, well, it has definitely been just a great, just, I don't know, season, year. Since, you know, we won't meet until, until the new year. Um, a couple of things, um, congratulations to outgoing School Board President, you know, Diane Martinez, you know, here. And congratulations to Eddie as incoming president. Um, you know, we've really been able to work with, um, our colleagues at PUSD, which is great. Um, the communication we've had with them and the superintendent. Um, I mean, he was out at, um, I don't remember, oh, the long day, actually, on Wednesday night, uh, uh, the superintendent was out there on the train and he was so excited. He was, and he was in his, like, I think he was in, like, his PHS gear. I mean, super excited. So, I mean, it's, it's great to see that. And then, um, I have all kinds of stuff, but I'm a big crybaby is the problem. But, um, I just want to say thank you, like my colleagues have, to just every single one of, you know, just our team. Um, we do, and I don't get tired of saying it. Um, I think every meeting I have said that, um, that we don't get tired of talking about how amazing you are and how, you know, we come up with, you know, sometimes some ideas that are probably a little crazy or you guys are wondering, like, how are we gonna pull this off? And you guys do it. And you guys don't tell us no. You guys may say like, well, you know, maybe if we do it this way and, you know, um, and it works and our residents are happy. Um, that was the feel that, that we've been getting, you know, from different residents, not just because of the holiday events, but just day to day. I, you know, I think the city is, residents are happy with the progress. They're happy with the way things are moving forward. Again, the lights, we have, I, we've all heard that they say, you know, we're looking forward to next year and seeing what you guys do. Um, so it's, it's been great. But again, thank you, thank you to our team that has put all of our events together. Um, I know sometimes it's been crazy hours, um, especially during the holidays, really crazy hours for, for our team. But, um, we're really blessed, um, with this team. Um, and I, I mean, just across the board. So, um, I also want to say happy birthday to my daughter. She's turning 22 today and I'm so proud of her. She's doing finals. But this was her, once she is done, she will have one more semester left at Aesuza Pacific. And so I'm, I'm excited about it. I'm excited about it. Um, so with that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. And do we have any staff report?
Yeah, comments from staff, just a few. Madam Mayor, thank you again for all the, um, showers appreciation by the, the council. The staff definitely deserves it. They do work hard. So, and what keeps a lot of them going is, um, the appreciation that you show. So, um, that's undeniable. Um, you, you definitely are very supportive of, of staff and it definitely shows and it, they feel that. So we appreciate that. So, um, just a few things, as was mentioned, Mr. Andres Gonzalez, uh, formerly in Community Services and Recreation, um, is now a management analyst in the Administrative Services Department. He's gonna be working for Andrew Villpondo, the Assistant City Manager, on a number of projects. So, um, we're excited, uh, for Andres to, for this opportunity for him. He's gonna grow in that, that position. We know he will. Um, a birthday was mentioned. It's also, um, council, uh, excuse me, V, Vice Mayor, Annette, Annette Delgado's birthday later this month. Um, so it, I wanted to mention that even though she's not here, um, tonight with us. Um, and then lastly, just happy holidays from, on behalf of the staff. I'd like to wish the council and the community a, a very pleasant holiday season.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we are actually going to recess and go into our successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency.
Actually, we have no closed session tonight. Yes, yes. So we can adjourn the meeting.
We can adjourn the council meeting right now, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, then we will, we will go ahead and adjourn our council meeting to January 23rd, 2024, 10:00 AM at Progress Park Plaza. And now we're gonna go ahead and I will call to order the successor agency for the Paramount Redevelopment Agency. Roll call, please.
Here.
Councilmember Olmos?
Here.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delgado? Mayor Oguayo?
Here. A motion to excuse Vice Mayor Delgado, please?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Oguayo?
Yes. Motion for the consent calendar, please.
So moved.
Roll call?
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Councilmember Quayre Stallings?
Yes.
Mayor Oguayo?
Yes, this meeting is now adjourned to January 23rd, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Have a good night, everyone, and Merry Christmas.
Where? In Downey? In Downey?